Pursuant to KRS Chapter 61, notice is hereby given that on May 13th, 2020, the Chair of the Fayette County Board of Education caught a special call meeting of the Board of Education for Thursday, May 14th, 2020 at 1:30 PM. The Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will conduct a virtual meeting on Thursday, May 14th, 2020 at 1:30 PM. This will be a virtual meeting streamlined online for the purpose of a budget work session. The link for this meeting is F C P S dot net slash virtual meeting. Please be advised that in a state of a proclaimed national emergency and under a similar declaration by the Governor, it is not currently feasible for the Board to provide meeting room conditions. In the face of COVID-19, a highly contagious virus that spreads between people who are in close contact with one another within about six feet. Under these exceptional circumstances in which the Commonwealth of Kentucky is confronting a worldwide pandemic, while nevertheless needing to accomplish critical public business pursuant to KRS 61 dot eight four zero. The Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will not provide a primary physical location for public viewing and will proceed pursuant to KRS 61 that eight two six with concessions outlined in Attorney General's Opinion O A G two zero dash zero five. Thus, the public can access the media via the live stream, but cannot be physically present at the meeting. At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting today and those of you who are watching virtually or on our TV station. As always, we do not have an option unfortunately for public comment during these virtual sessions, but we encourage you to reach out to us through our emails that you can find on the district webpage so that you can provide insight into the budget and into your questions and your concerns about the upcoming school year. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Daly to take attendance.
Good afternoon. Mr. Raymond Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Daryl Love? Ms. Kristy Morris?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spires?
Present. And I just want to make note that Mr. Love has a celebration of life and is why he is not able to attend today, but we do not have actual action items today. And so he is going to capture the presentation after this meeting so he makes sure that he has the information that is provided today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Cocke for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Stephanie, and we're going to get right to the informational item, the discussion. Before we do so, would it be point in order to have Board Vice Chair Ray Daniels read the mission statement? Good night.
No, that that would be a point of order. So, Mr. Daniels, if you can, read the mission statement.
All right, I've got to find a mission statement first. So let me do that because I don't want to read anything out of order. You think I've had that memorized by now? With the note, hold on one second.
Why we do it, to remind ourselves.
All right, here we go. Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
Fantastic, and so as we have a budget discussion, the mission statement is the North Star and the strategic plan is how you get there. And how you support that strategic plan is reflected in the decisions you make and the values that you uphold, that the community expects you to uphold, which is how we allocate resources, scarce resources, especially at this time. And so with that, today we're going to, this afternoon, talk about excellent supports, excellent staff, and excellent student opportunities. And so I'm going to turn it over to John and Julaine to move us forward. And I think the first presentation is going to be excellent supports, looking at the Office of Student Support led by Director Mr. Doug Adams.
Good afternoon, Board. Sounds a little unusual saying good afternoon as opposed to good evening, but yes, we will continue, pick up where we left off the other, last Thursday, actually on the seventh. Next slide, please, just go into the first one. Today's agenda, just to reiterate what Superintendent Cocke said, excellent supports, excellent staff, excellent schools and student opportunities, presentations with various individuals you see listed there. Next slide, please. Just to reset the stage from where we were the other day for those that are, that were not with us virtually last, last week on the seventh, but we did have presentations a week ago. Today, you will see the day 14th, you will see again excellent support, staff, schools, student opportunities by various individuals and various programs that we have to meet that mission, to reach that North Star. Next slide, please. Mine has not advanced, next slide, please.
Should be showing May 18th, is that what others are saying?
Yes, mine, I do not see May 18th. I apologize, but for whatever reason, I still see May 7th.
Does anybody else see the May 18th slide?
I see it.
I see May 18th.
I see May 18th.
I don't know what's happened, I don't see that.
They have to open it up on your desktop so that you can have that, so you can see the slide as well without just following along on the screen.
Yeah.
That's what I do sometimes.
Okay, let me see if I, I'm going to have to go, go get that.
While John's looking at it, this is Doug, I can go ahead and read this because I'm right after that.
I got it, I got it.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay.
I got it, I got it.
It just popped up, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened, delayed reaction, I guess Doug's offering is what prompted it. May 18th, which will be Monday at the regular Board meeting, we will continue our presentations with excellent relationships. And then Julaine and I will discuss, bring you discussions about projected revenues and expenses for FY '21, along with salary schedules, then on these, hopefully the final special call meeting for May 26th, we'll review some budget facts, Julaine and I will, as well as the final tentative budget and salary schedules, and we'll, at that point, we'll be asking for hopefully approval for the tentative as it has to be delivered to K D E by the end of the month. Next slide, please.
Real quickly, Mr. White, if I can ask, how, how, what's the timeline on when you think the Board might have that information in advance of those meetings? The revenue expenditure reports or projections and then the budget summary doc?
We are actually still working on that, Mr. Murphy. I will have to get to Julaine to see about getting that to you over the weekend, but it's not final yet. We are still assembling those numbers, but hopefully I will talk to Julaine and we will see if we can get that to you before Monday. Budget timeline, continue mid-August as the district receives our property assessments and proposed tax rates. We have 45 days from the certification by the Kentucky Department of Revenue to actually set those rates and get them to the county clerk, Don Blevins' office of county clerk. That 45-day clock starts, we don't have that date nailed down just yet. We've heard early August, mid-August, I've heard August 3rd, I don't know if that's going to be a firm date or not, that's been a date that's been thrown out there. Regardless though, that's when our 45-day clock starts. Mid-August, fund balance process to be finalized, again, we'll cut off the fiscal year FY '20, August 15, and that's, at that point, we'll really start to pour through the numbers and get a, as best as we know, a final ending fund balance for FY '20 or a beginning FY '21 fund balance, which as you know is top number for the budget on the revenue side. Mid-August, S B D M staffing allocations, again, September, early September has been the requested timeframe by the county clerk's office that taxing agencies like us have final rates to his office so that he can begin to put together the tax bills that go to property owners. September 30th is our deadline to be submitted, our final working budget to be submitted to K D E. Next slide, and with that, Mr. Adams, you're up.
So, going to be talking about the Office of Student Support, good afternoon, next slide, please. The areas, the Office of Student Support covers is Safe Schools Office, the P B I S Office, the Safe Crisis Management, Department of People Personnel, Student Support Professional Institute, School Social Workers, McKinney Vento and Guidance and Counseling, and the Student Support Professional Institute. Next slide, please. District Mental Health Specialist, the Crisis Response Team, the Family Resource Centers, Youth Service Centers, Extended School Services, and the Common Assessment, Adolescent Assessment and Health Promotion, and then Education and Learning, Common Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, District Line. Next slide, please. So, we'll start out with the Director of Student Support is a 1.0 F T E, it's funded by the General Fund. That individual manages the, manages an evaluating staff, evaluating certified district mental health specialists, managing department grant budgets, the Frisk District Contact. There's an administrative assistant at 1.0 F T E out of the General Fund, completing director, P B I S, AmeriCorps, District Mental Health Specialist, McKinney Vento, Safety Tax P O's, department timesheets, lead forms, and assist is assisting with monitoring McKinney Vento. Next slide, please. The Director of Student Support Office response to COVID and N T I is securing and shopping for food, cleaning supplies and toiletries for the Frisk food backpacks, securing donations, the Calipari Foundation has given us $390,000 to date, and the Matthew Mitchell has given us $131,400 to supplement our food backpacks with cleaning supplies, toiletries, and extra food. We wrote a grant and received a $10,000 grant to supplement utilities and foods for families. Next slide, please. The Safe Schools Specialist is a 1.0 F T E out of the School, Safe Schools Grant. They co-coordinate the K R S Senate Bill One implementation and monitoring. They do district-wide behavior data collection and analysis. They develop and plan implement services with district-wide P B I S coaches. They develop, plan, implement, and monitor all of the C S Is as the P B I S contact. They co-lead the restorative practice initiative for Fayette County Public Schools. We have two cohorts that's been completed. Safe Schools' response to COVID-19 and N T I implementation, they have worked on virtual trainings and they are currently starting the Train the Trainer Restorative Practice with I R P. That'll begin in July and we have 11 staff members that will be trainers of restorative practice starting in the fall. The regular restorative practice training is not eligible to be done in virtual, but the Train the Trainer is, so we're starting that. They've been calling, she's been calling with the District, the McKinney Vento families. She's responsible for contacting and monitoring 70 families, communicating and training with K D E and changes in intimate campus for all 66 schools and programs. She finalizes the Student Code of Conduct and includes an E L T Zoom presentation and a board presentation next Board meeting. The group has done two trainings with P B I S, 77 participants. They've had seven specific summer virtual trainings and Student Support Professional Institute that's coming up. Next slide, please. We have the P B I S team and we have six P B I S coaches. They're listed based on their funding source. We have two from Safe Schools Grant, two from the Safety School Tax, and two from Title IV. Their job is to develop, plan, and implement, monitor, and support elementary, high school, and program schools, P B I S programs, and work with administrators, coaches, and teams to move up the level system with a tiered fidelity inventory. Next slide, please.
What's the timeline on that Safe School Grant? How much time's left in that?
It runs, Julaine and John can help me, but it runs from June, from September the 30th through September the 29th every year with a carryover option, 10%.
It's a 15-month grant.
Okay.
Next slide, please. So their response to the COVID-19 and N T I implementation is it's been all hands on deck to get families and backpacks and extra food and toiletries on, so they've been assisting with that. They have been helping with McKinney Vento families, tracking and making sure we haven't lost anyone, making sure they have their N T I packets and if needed, hotspots and internet connection. They have done, they're working on the same trainings that I already mentioned for summer virtual trainings and current trainings. Next slide. So the Education and S C L Coordinator is a 1.0 F T E out of the Safety School Tax. The Districtwide S C M Specialist plans, develops, and implements, monitor, and support district and school staff based on S C M data. The S C L Coordinator's, she also develops plans and implements, monitor, and supports schools in the implementation of their K through 12 district-wide S C L adopted curriculum. Training of the staff is to begin implementations, trainings to be implemented for the 2021 school year. Next slide, please. So that Office's response to S C M and S C L to the COVID-19 N T I is to create, plan, and implement virtual S C M training, so all the research can be done virtually. New, new employees trained in S C M cannot be done virtually, so we're working on trying to make sure at the beginning of the school year we can get that completed. 96 S C L trainers have been trained as of 5/5/2020. 37 elementary schools will adopt caring school, community, and school year, in the school year 2021. 40 high school S C L trainers have been trained as of 5/19/2020. All high schools and alternative programs have adopted School Connect for the 2021 school year. All of those trainings have been done virtually with the vendors. 85 participants have been trained in S C L connected teaching while socially distancing, distance. Two trainings are hosted in this topic. Three middle schools currently using Second Steps S C L curriculum, and all middle schools will use Second Step in the 2021 school year. Next slide, please. The Office of the D P P, we have one D P P that is the oversees, the district attendants, oversight of the D P P office, boundaries, enrollments, assist with enrollments, residency issues, our school calendar, coordinates the D P P office function and does evaluations. We have three A D P Ps funded out of the General Fund and they take care of ed neglect related to education. They take care of filing juvenile petitions against students that are habitually truant and truant. They maintain DCBS communication regarding those families. They participate with court, doesn't need workers' office with those families, and they do homeschool investigations and participate in the fair team. We have one A D P P funded by the General Fund that does the technical assistance to all schools for student-level I C issues, training registrars, transition reports, the SARS growth fact, SARS and the growth factor. They monitor monthly data reports on all schools, educational enhancements, enrollment, and guardianship issues. Next slide, please. We have an out-of-area specialist in that, in that office. They manage movement across the district, record transfers, and assist with data management duties of the A D P Ps. That's funded out of the General Fund. We have an administrative assistant in that office, it's home, she is, manages all the munis functions for the D P P office along with homeschool archived, academic archive records, and court records and D P P phone calls. I'll just let you know, we still have microfiche for some of our records. People Personnel Office response to the COVID-19 is tracking N T I participation, calendar adjustment, the SARS reporting, end-of-the-year reports, responding to schools' request for home visits to assist with non-participating students, resident home verification, student enrollment, student records request, in and out of state, court record requests, community archive academic requests, shopping for the Frisk supply distribution, and helping every Tuesday deliver, prepare for the Frisk pickup at the warehouse. Next slide. The Frisk is under our office, there's 46 Frisk coordinators that's funded out of the Frisk grant. 46 coordinators manage 52 centers. The Frisk coordinators are the school-level contact to remove barriers to success for our students. They, through March the 27th, Frisk can make 405,467 family contacts and provide for 3,200 weekly backpacks. They have, we have an administrative that helps in that area, funded out of the General Fund, manages all Frisk munis activities, Frisk consultants and coordinator manages all E S S stipends and functions of those grants. Next slide, please. The Frisk response to the COVID-19 N T I is continue the food backpack program, adding toiletries and cleaning supplies and additional food. The food backpacks are pretty big now. The mode of getting food backpacks to students had to be changed significantly. We added curbside service and home delivery. We do a drop at the door and go, and hand sanitize and wear gloves and masks at all times. Title I Family Resource Center coordinators have had to shop and recruit shoppers for the Targor Calipari Foundation gift cards. They have provided a significant increase, for a significant increase in requests for food and utilities assistance. Frisk have made 273, 293 contacts since we started N T I. Next slide. We have the McKinney Vento grant and position, we have a homeless education liaison that manages all of our students that are, meet the requirement of being homeless by the act. Currently, we have 733 students. We provide a lot of services for those students and remove barriers along with the Frisk for the student to be successful. That position is funded out of the General Fund. We have a 10-hour-per-week worker that helps us as a liaison, and she does the same things, working on attendance and academics and behavior for McKinney Vento students and helps with the Frisk and building administration with specific students. The McKinney Vento Office response to COVID-19 and N T I implementation, we have interdepartmental collaboration with P B I S and D P P to assist with making ongoing wellness checks, emails and home visits, communication, communicating, communications address both academic and welfare concerns. We had additional hours funded with the liaison from 10 to 25, working with L T M S, allowing, the principal there allowed us to use all 25 of her hours to help with the McKinney Vento outreach program. We had the Mitchell Family Foundation Partnership Funding, provides ongoing assistance for welfare, care inclusive of rent and utilities. We had the B P and T Partnership Funding, providing ongoing assistance for welfare and care inclusive of rental and utilities provisions that would keep a family from becoming homeless. We have a District Mental Health Coordinator at a 1.0 F T E funded out of Title IV. They manage all of the district mental health specialists and the school mental health program across the district. They collaborate with the district P B I S team to support schools in the implementation of an interconnected systems framework, organize and participates on many collaborative meetings with partnerships and community agencies. They, we collaborate, she collaborates with the Ridge to host an onsite partial hospitalization program to district students who qualify. That position manages the crisis response team. Next slide. So the Coordinator's response to COVID-19 and N T Is provide support to 300-plus student support professionals with the N T I implementation, Zoom, P L Cs, phone calls, et cetera. Provide tri-weekly updates to student support staff regarding resources, online training, materials to use with intervention supports for students and families. They monitor the safety relay alerts from our Chromebooks when a student is homicidal or suicidal or makes self-harming statements. We lead the crisis, she leads the crisis response team efforts, virtual response, at this time making virtual responses for that, for students that are in crisis. Virtual learning opportunities for continued education and assisting collection and distribution of donated resources for the Frisk, for Fayette County Public Schools families. So just to give you some statistics about the district mental health specialists, between January 6th through the 13th of this year, 46 instructional days, they made 19,041 contacts with families. And between April the 14th to April the 30th, they made 18,125 contacts in 19 instructional days. So they are very busy responding to mental health needs of our families. Next. District Mental Health Specialists, we have 50 of those. They provide support to students and family on S C L and mental health issues. They do utilize evidence-based interventions. They work on resources, they train each other. We offer trainings throughout the year in our P L Cs and they consult with teachers and professional learning and supporting student mental health. That's funded out of the Safety Tax. Next slide. Elementary Child Governance Specialist, we have 37. They do a lot of the same things minus serious mental health issues. They do individual group counseling. They consult with teachers and parents who have children's concern. They manage 504s at the most, for the most part. They consult with school staff and representative on assessing student needs. A lot of those positions manage the M T S S and P B I S tiered team. That's funded out of the General Fund. There's some statistics on the services they've provided at the bottom. Next slide, please. We have secondary guidance specialists, we have 38 at middle school, 56 at high school. They provide individual and group counseling, consulting with school staff on represent, on assessing student needs, and assist in transitional intervention to college and career readiness. That's a huge part of what they're doing right now is making sure all of our, our, our high school students, our seniors graduate college and career ready and are ready for all their applications to colleges and programs. That they're funded out of the General Fund. Next slide, please. Social workers, we have 35 of those, they're funded out of Title I or the General Fund or the school funding, so 35 of those. They do physical, social, emotional needs of students, provide family assistance as needed, develop and implement intervention plans for students, and collaborates with teachers and school personnel to determine services. There's some statistics there at the bottom of services provided. Next slide, please. So the District Mental Health Specialist Guidance, Social Work, and Community School Based Mental Health Response to N T I is monitoring student participation for N T I, monitoring their caseload they were already doing prior to an implementation of N T I, providing mental health resources to student and families needing outside agency support, providing support groups for families to cope with crisis situations, and collaborating with Frisk in effort to meet basic needs of students and families. Next slide, please. So we have a school-based community mental health agency program, often referred to as the Project Aware Community Mental Health Base Program. We have continued that program, the funding, the agencies provide that funding, no F C P S funding involved. The agencies provide onsite mental health therapy for students and agencies are continuing to provide individual therapeutic services through telehealth portals. And a lot of our students are using our Chrome, their Chromebook to stay connected with those services with the outside provider. Next slide, please. So we have a crisis response team manager, it's currently managed by Shrika Smith. It's utilized, we funded out of any place we can find some money, and that's various grants and ways. Works with the, the coroner, Lexington Police regarding deaths of students on call 24/7. Includes 120, our crisis response team includes 127, 120 student support professionals that are all trained in an evidence-based crisis response intervention called Prepare. And they organize and distribute, distribute crisis response team backpacks and materials. Next slide. We have a district E S S coordinator funded out of the E S S grant. They monitor, they develop and monitor the E S S program, handbook procedures informed. They train the E S S coordinators annually. They, they receive E S S proposals for the regular school year, E S, E S S daytime waiver proposals, and they review summer E S S proposals and approve those. They monitor, monitor the E S S interventions that are put into intimate campus and run an error report and make sure all those are correct. Next slide, please. So the response to N T I, that whole how E S S looks had to change. It went virtual for some schools, and so she's had to provide guidance for that and virtual instruction strategies for at-risk students. We had to monitor and make sure that the E S S program was separate from the regular instructional work that the students do and they were receiving those extra services, and then they had to do the data entry for that. Next slide. So we have an AmeriCorps Specialist, a 1.0 AmeriCorps grant. As you know, that, we received a grant, a planning grant to write the AmeriCorps grant. That has been completed and we have gotten positive feedback from the AmeriCorps grant at the state level and we're hoping that will be implemented in the fall. Next slide, please. Student Support Professional Institute, we've done this, it'll be our third annual, it's just the thing this year, it's going to be virtual. So we're going to do a virtual format with live presenters and national speakers, and it's going to be a shorter day across three days, so that way we don't wear our student support professionals out in Zoom all day. Is there any questions?
I just want to take a moment and, and highlight something that you said, and that's that students are using our Chromebooks to access their mental health appointments. And I think that's really important because that's not really a Fayette County, we're doing that service, but that's, you know, the city's not helping these kids get these appointments, their insurance isn't helping them, their medical providers can't, so if they did not have the Chromebooks and the materials that we as a district are providing, they would not be able to access their outside health. And I think that is just a real critical point that I want to make sure is highlighted and make sure that everybody understands, outside, that you, we provide more. Outside, that you, we provide more than just academic support. Um and that it's really in our entire community's best interest that these kids are, you know, that we're investing in them and making sure that they're staying healthy during this time. So I just wanna highlight that point one more time, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The next section is on excellent staff. And that is one of our imperatives in our strategic plan. And as we shared the other night and Doug just shared, we have many excellent staff in our district. And they're made up of uh certified staff that hold certifications from the Educational Professional Standards Board. And as well as classified staff that are salaried as well as our hour- hourly staff, excuse me. Our substitutes, our paraprofessionals, which is our coaches, and then our student workers that we get to work with. So they all make up our excellent staff. In order to have those excellent staff, we are always recruiting and working on retaining those excellent staff members. We do local, state, national and international recruiting. And um we've always done some virtual, but we are doing a whole lot more virtual recruiting than we didn't previously. And we'll continue to look for opportunities to do that. Um with the support of retaining staff is providing professional growth opportunities. And that starts when we first hire our staff. So with our new employee orientation, we provide training as well as necessary things um that involve like signing up for benefits and some of those type of things. We invite vendors in, especially like our um so- our Fayette County Education Association to be a part of that with us. Um to provide um those resources to our new employees from the very beginning. Um as a new employee, new teachers go through an induction program. It's a three-year program that we've shared with you previously. This year in nineteen twenty, we had a hundred and thirty-five members participating in year one. One hundred and sixty-six participating in year two and seventy-four participating in year three. Some o- other of the next um ways we continue to support for retention and recruiting is our leadership pipeline initiatives. Those are our current aspiring leadership programs. They're designed to develop the fun uh the foundation of administrative and instructional skill sets as well as on the operational side as well. We have three programs. We have an aspiring principal program specific to the principal role in our district, which is critical as all of our roles are. Aspiring school leadership program for certified staff and a variety of leadership roles. And then our classified aspiring leadership program, which is led by Kian Massey and um Lindsay um, excuse, excuse me, Lindsay Wright in our legal office. They kinda co-present that program. National Board Certification Mentoring Program is a fabulous uh addition to our support package for our employees. We have a one hundred and ninety-eight National Board Certified Teachers in Fayette County. With seventeen new members in that group um for the past two years, which is awesome. When you become a a school leader in our district, we provide leadership mentors. And they work directly with our new leaders as well as those uh schools in our empowerment zone. A partner zone in our CSI schools as well, so we continue that. Some of the other benefits that our board has supported for our, Amy, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um we have our employee assistance program that the board supports. That provides many services to our employees and actually um anyone in their household, any family members. So like when my daughter was away at college, she could also access this even when she's not living with me in the home. So it's a wonderful program. And the counseling services are something certainly that we are promoting with our our uh employees during this um pandemic. Personnel is also some support that we provide as needed with investigations, open records requests, EEOCs. Mediation has been a wonderful addition to this uh personnel support package. Again, Kian Massey and Lindsay Wright uh kind of co-mediate employee um issues with our supervisors. And it really provides another layer of uh continual growth when there are things that do come up. And staff assistance teams, directive growth plans, corrective action plans and verbal and written warnings are also a part of that as well. Thank you. Any questions?
Uh yes, if I, if I may ask, uh I've noticed, I noticed this year on our um on the employee um. Uh personnel changes report, we had two hundred and ninety non-renewals. And that uh was, is close to that number last year as well. So eh where are, I mean, have we been, do we have any longitudinal data on the non-renewals? If we're doing these efforts to retain, um do we know what steps are being taken before we resort to the decision to not renew a certified staff member? What information can you give me on that?
Well, there's gonna be uh several different areas. There's not, um there are statistics behind that, especially that we're looking at of those that are going through our induction program. So that we can make sure we're putting uh the right supports in and and working on any additional supports and feedback. Um to make sure that they're the right supports. It is about, it's uh pretty consistent um this year as it is in the past. Some of that has to do with our staffing policies. Our schools are not staffed at a hundred percent each year, so there there will always be staffing reductions. But um the the induction program and the outside mentoring, in addition to what the principal provides, has been key to really helping retain that staff.
So have we seen the numbers dip uh as a- as we implement some of these retention strategies?
Yes, and I don't have those in front of me. We did a presentation, I guess, last year, and I think it was between year one and two, we were at eighty-six percent retention in our new teacher induction program, which was awesome.
That's correct. Jennifer, did you also share that although um you have not renewed? I'm sorry. No, no problem. The non-renewals, historically, those teachers are brought back and rehired. So that's how we got, so if you look at it, Tyler, it was, it's generally consistent with that number. Couple hundred teachers every year, if you look back. But even going back to last year, eighty-six per- eighty-six percent of the teachers who came through a new teacher induction got hired year two, but maybe not at the same school.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And those re- those uh recisions of non-renewals as funding and attrition through staff come in will also be reported to the board.
Okay. Yeah, that, and that was gonna be my next question. If we could just kinda see that breakdown then of, okay, here, here were the springtime non-renewals. And then once we get a clearer picture in the fall, and especially that day for a number, that we see where we are.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, I have the next section. I'm gonna talk a little bit about my department, which is the Office of Instructional Technology. And we are uh underneath the Department of Technology, we're the instructional side. And our primary focus is working with our teachers and helping our teachers work with students to make sure that they are really utilizing the technology tools available to them to the best of their ability. And obviously with uh recent events, we've had a lot more emphasis on learning how to use some of those tools. But uh in addition to um that focus, we also support a lot of uh subgroups throughout our schools. We provide support uh to our school technology coordinators. So every school and program has a primary point of contact, that's a supplemental duty position. And we work with those folks um as a liaison to their building for technology needs. We also support the library media specialist uh out in the schools and provide support. Uh our student technology leadership program, STLP. Uh we have um groups in almost every one of our buildings and we have coordinators and provide funding uh to help support those programs to encourage student participation. We uh also support our school-level digital learning coaches, uh also known as technology resource teachers frequently at the school level. And then, of course, provide support to district office staff and school leaders as well. This is just a quick snapshot of our small part of the technology department and what we look like. Uh I have basically two different groups of staff members. I have digital learning coaches and I have four uh folks in those positions that are supporting our almost seventy schools and programs. And then I also have two STEM learning coaches in a position that we added about a year and a half ago. Uh and that helps support our STEM bus, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So our digital learning coaches, like I said, I have four. Those are certified school teachers um that have shown, you know, great interest in technology. They do have ten extended days to help with professional development and training. Uh we provide support and training to our staff on best practices for using digital tools. So it's not technical support, but instructional support. Uh we do that in person and through virtual professional development offerings. And then in addition to that, we support a lot of district initiatives. This year in particular, a lot of emphasis and time went to our one-to-one middle school rollout of Chromebooks. Because all of our middle schools were one-to-one this year, uh in addition to some additional schools. We also have a heavy emphasis on Google certification training. We've had a lot of individual staff members as well as some whole school um training that we've done for staff that were pursuing that certification. We support our schools with digital citizenship or internet safety instruction, which is a board requirement as well as state and federal law that we have that instruction annually. Uh the next one is probably what we've done a whole lot of, uh that's been really important lately, is the support for online classrooms and trying to help our teachers that maybe didn't have online classrooms a couple of months ago. And suddenly, they all now realize the need for that. So we've been providing a lot of support around um that particular emphasis. Uh we review and recommend online tools. And then we typically have a couple of events each year, our district STEM fair, which unfortunately this year we had to cancel um due to COVID nineteen. And then our innovation innovations for learning um conference. And so we'll talk about that as well in just a moment. The STEM learning coaches, we have two certified teachers with twenty extended days. Those are funded from Title IV. And their primary focus is instruction through the STEM bus. And we have this year been focusing on third grade. The goal was to visit every elementary school and provide instruction to every third-grade student. And we were almost there when things took a turn. Um so I think we got to all but about maybe eight schools this year. Uh we were on track and had them all scheduled, but unfortunately, uh we had that disruption. Uh so our, my two STEM learning coaches, most days are out teaching third graders. Uh but in addition to that, they're developing a lot of content, STEM lessons and materials and providing professional development for uh our STEM teachers in our elementary schools. But also our classroom teachers, trying to make sure that we're uh moving our focus on STEM to be part of the classroom and not just an extra um piece of uh instruction. We also provide support for district and community events. So the STEM bus is often at, uh we were at the Lexington Legends STEM Days. We were at district cuts and curls and the backpack um days that we do before school starts, those kinds of events. Uh and we were a nationally recognized program this year, so we're very proud of that. Uh as of the end of February, before um we had to move to virtual um at-home training. We had reached and taught three thousand third graders through our STEM bus visits. About nineteen hundred other students, K-12, through our community events. And we had interacted with a hundred and twenty-five classrooms. Since March, uh we've been really, really busy. And so we've kind of refocused all of our efforts to virtual training. We have been offering uh training, starting that very first day that um students were at home. We've been offering training every day since then. And so we've offered it over a hundred and eighty-four live virtual training sessions. We've had over five thousand Fayette County staff members participate. Obviously, that means a lot of them are participating more than once. But we know that we've had at least a thousand unique staff members that have joined us for those trainings. So we are very excited about that reach um that we've had. We've also been offering daily virtual office hours, uh basically instructional one-on-one help for teachers to come in and ask for um assistance with whatever they might need. And we've had over four hundred and twenty-five visits if those one-to-one office hour helps. A couple of things that we have changed since March. Um we certainly had resources pulled together, but we've had to do that in a different way, um in more intentional way. So we have put together our website for our district staff. All of the live trainings that we've done have also been recorded, so those are available on demand to our staff members. We have created that internal website that not als- not only offers the recorded trainings, but also documentation, direction documents, information primarily for staff. But also some um documents for students and for families that we've also placed on the district COVID nineteen website as well. And our annual conference, which is so very popular, not only with Fayette County staff, but around the state, we've made a name for ourselves. Um we've obviously had to change plans that was originally scheduled for June fourth in person, and that's not possible. So we have moved that to July twenty-seventh and have opened up registration for that. Uh earlier this week, we had over five hundred people that are registered. Uh and we still have a call for presenters out, but we will be offering that as a completely virtual conference on the twenty-seventh. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Good afternoon Superintendent Clark, board members and my fellow colleagues. Today, Ms. Stevenson, Dr. Matthews, Ms. Morton and I will be sharing the initiatives STEAM, Girl STEM, The Promise Academies and Locust Trace Hive in place for ensuring excellent student opportunities. One of the five district strategic plan imperatives. These init- initiatives ensure the FCS core values of students first, victory in the classroom and the involvement of all stakeholders. To ensure the success of our schools, our students and our collective community. Our initiatives align with the blueprint for student success launched in two thousand and sixteen. Which outlines one hundred specific strategies for achieving educational excellence and equity for all. You will see how each of our programs prepare students pre-grad through grade twelve to embody the FCPS portrait of a graduate. A young person who is civically engaged, culturally competent and equipped for the future. When considering excellent student opportunities, our district made a commitment to provide programs that meet the needs and interests of all students. I am sure we will all agree, the inputs required to inspire students to learn and provide the support they need to be successful in the career paths they choose are worth the investment. In keeping with the phrase, one size does not fit all, you will see the creativity associated with our four programs. Along with all other special programs across the district and how we offer innovative solutions for student inspiration. As you will hear and as you have heard, we embody the district's commitment to provide unique programs that meet the needs and interests of all students. Ms. John, next slide. Locust Trace opened in two thousand and eleven as an extension of Eastside Technical Center. At that time, there were a hundred and ninety-seven FCPS students who were juniors and seniors. Since the opening, we've come a long way. In two thousand nineteen-twenty, Locust Trace was home to thirty-seven, three hundred and seventy-seven on-campus students in grades nine through twelve from Fayette and Woodford Counties. And thirteen hundred and sixty-nine students in our satellite programs. We have projected an on-campus enrollment for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one of four hundred and six students from Fayette and Woodford Counties. So we serve um eleven different sending schools. And then we have an agreement with Woodford County that we guarantee twenty to twenty-five seats for them. And in return, they provide um thirty thousand dollars for a portion of our staffing. Our projected satellite enrollment, sorry, Ms. John, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is nineteen hundred and ninety-six students. So if you look at our collective um enrollment and on-campus and across um the satellite programs. We serve about twenty-five hundred students. This year alone, we had two hundred and fifteen applications. And we were able to accommodate one hundred and fifty-eight of those because of a plan for a new student-centered model of learning that we will roll out this fall. We're still working on a model and tweaking that model that would accommodate all eligible students. Last year, we had a hundred and sixty-four applicants and we were able to accept a hundred and twenty-five. Of note, Carter G. Woodson Academy, which is one of our satellite programs, this was the first year um for the programming there. And after just one year, the projected enrollment is up forty percent for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. When we're talking about a return on investment, and this is not just with agriculture. One middle school CTE teacher can expose approximately six hundred unique students per year. So we're excited um by the fact that with twenty-five total staff members, that includes both our certified and classified. Um we can serve over twenty-five hundred students. Ms. John, next slide. This is an overview of our staffing. Um and you can see there that we have creatively worked to create some partial FTEs. So we have um general funds that provide for the majority of our staffing. But we're also able to increase the staffing through some purchases with our layback funding, which is specific to the three tech centers in the district. And then also through um a new partnership with the Kentucky Thoroughbred Association that we'll be talking about. And then also with our um partnership with our satellite schools. They each contribute a portion of the funding for staffing. And then, as I mentioned, Woodford County. And then, as I mentioned, Woodford County as well. Ms. John's next slide. When we look at on-campus opportunities, we see that we focus on a hands-on instruction. It is predominantly skill-based. We do utilize the eighty-two acres for um individual student supervised agriculture experience program. In the agricultural world, we know that as SAEs. So every student in an ag ed program is required to be um to actually plan and implement at least one supervised agriculture experience program. And there are over fifty areas in which they can choose to design their SAE. It can range anything from a home improvement project to mowing a yard to a student showing an animal to a placement um like at our, one of our thoroughbred farms where students have the ability to have paid or unpaid um internships. So we'll be utilizing the eighty-two acres with sheep, goats, cattle, chicken, horses, rabbits, gardens, research areas, greenhouse. We have one young man who has an apiary there and we're excited about that. And then also on campus, they're able, the students are able to pursue leadership opportunities through FFA, um LEA, which is the Legacy Equine Academy and our manners program, which is through the Office of Diversity at the University of Kentucky. Our off-campus programs include internships and cooperative experiences. Um, right now, the all of our students involved in an internship or a co-op are seniors and we require them to meet their career-ready benchmarks before they're allowed to participate. So we roll um that out, that um requirement out to them in their freshman year so they can go ahead and set their goals. And then we expose them their sophomore year to the opportunities we have for them off-campus through job shadowing experiences. So this year, all of our tenth graders, approximately a hundred and five students participated in at least one job shadowing experience off-campus. And our co-op facilitator um ensures that that's she's the one who provides the experiences for the students. This past year, we had twelve paid and twelve unpaid um seniors who participated in internships and co-op experiences. So we had a total of sixty seniors. Um, our goal is to have one hundred percent of our seniors involved in off-campus opportunities. One of the barriers that we faced is students had to provide their own transportation. However, we do have a plan moving forward for removing this barrier for several of our students. Then you'll notice that we are also blessed to have a real-world learning opportunity at the Kentucky Castle. So basically for the cost of one agriculture teacher, we receive an eight million dollar campus for our students. There they have access to unique learning opportunities, everything from um project-based learning designs that included the um lavender display in front of the castle. They designed the um educational garden. They redid the beds um for the raised beds for the chef's garden. They built a greenhouse. There's now Wild Health located, which is a spa on um the castle's campus. And so we're involved in that to some degree and the day-to-day running of their farm-to-table initiative. So basically, um our Stevens, under the guidance of the teacher there, are tasked with carrying out the visions of the different castle owners and they actually make presentations to the castle owners. Um, so this position came about um and will illustrate the importance of having advisory groups for our CTE programs. And then also through the collaboration uh with Kim Lyon, who is our strategic uh business partnership manager, we are able to realize these opportunities for students. So this past year at the castle, well, actually, let me back up. Our first year, we had eleven students. This past year, we have seventeen Locust Trace students. And then thanks to two of our teachers, we had twelve Leestown student, middle school student interns who worked at the castle all summer. We've collaborated with Bryan Station High School's IT Academy for a documentary piece that we are rolling out about the development of the castle program. The University of Kentucky Farm Bureau, many other business and industry professionals, along with our education colleagues who look to this model as an example for future programming in their districts. This year, um for twenty twenty-one, we've got twenty-three students who have requested to spend a portion of their educational day at the castle. So every year we have these opportunities. We see in more and more students wanting to take advantage of them. With our satellite programs, um as I said, Carter G. Woodson Academy, the collaboration started this school year with twenty-four high school students and ninety middle students, middle school students for a total of a hundred and fourteen scholars. I'm proud to say that the twenty twenty-one projections are forty to forty-five high school students and a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five middle school students. So a total of a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy scholars, which represents a little bit over a forty percent increase if I've done my math right. The course offerings they have there in the high school are agri-science and then through the feedback of the scholars, um that teacher has decided to focus on sports turf, grass management, agribusiness management, and they're doing dual credit with UK. Um, and then middle school will be exploratory. So we also offer off-campus satellite programs at our different middle schools. Hayes and Leestown are both pre-academy and we have sixth and seventh grade exploratory options there. And then um Hayes focuses on a vet science initiative for their eighth graders and a horticulture curriculum for eighth graders at Leestown. Because of the KTA grant, um we, which is Kentucky Thoroughbred Association, we will be launching a new program at Bryan Station Middle School and Tates Creek Middle School for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Ms. John's next slide. These are just a few of our partners. Um, I would like to highlight that Altech has always supported Locust Trace since it's been open. We are developing more and more um college and university partnerships. And then we are expanding on our minority initiatives through educating boys of color and the work with Christian Adair is doing there with Frankie's Corner. We also participate with the Leestown Middle School Capital League, Legacy Equine Academy Manners. And then I would like to say we really have enjoyed the work we've done with the William Wells Brown Promise Academy this year. It's been enlightening for both our students and our teachers um to be involved in that. So what's on the horizon? Ms. John's, if you'll skip to the next slide. So we were blessed to receive the Kentucky Thoroughbred Association Grant Project, which provides uh funding for over three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars over a three-year period. And they are, they will strongly consider an option to renew after three years. So included in the first year is funding for a new middle school um teacher, which will be at Beaumont and Creek, as we've said, and then additional staffing each year after that. There's also funding rolled in for additional middle school student exposure to business and industry career opportunities along with funding for Locust Trace students to have additional off-campus um opportunities. The purpose is to create a highly skilled pipeline of graduates and the grant is there to help us stimulate the interest at an earlier age and expose students at an earlier age while keeping in mind that there is a desperate industry need. Um, there are approximately thirty-five thousand equine operations in Kentucky that generate eighty thousand jobs and it is a three-point-four billion-dollar industry in Kentucky alone, okay? And so that unique part of that industry is that most students are going to start at an entry level, even adults would start at an entry level, but there is always the potential to work up. A lot of the farms who are part of this cooperative and this initiative have said that they will uh they would be willing to look into helping provide housing and uh helping students pursue college opportunities in terms of tuition reimbursement and that sort of thing. Uh, the potential for this to expand to um we dream an international equine boarding academy that could be opened under the FCPS umbrella um with outside funding for that initiative would be something that's on the horizon. Um, it's a dream. Uh, but we haven't forgotten that dream and it's always there as we work towards fulfilling the goals of this initiative. And then also in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we are rolling out a new partnership with Parks and Rec, thanks to Mrs. Kim Lyon. So we have a motto that the world is our campus and really thinking beyond the bricks and mortar of what a school looks like. And this partnership with Parks and Rec opens up the entire city and everything embodied by Parks and Rec. And so we're excited because this removes the transportation barrier for our students. So we have an opportunity for a variety of experiences here for our students and one example would be um one of our young men is going to work with the Parks and Rec Director to ensure that the city of Lexington has its first apiary up and going. So we will have a lot of opportunities there and additional partners that come on. And then this fall, we will, to accommodate all of these off-campus learning experiences and the unique things we're trying to provide for our students, we will be rolling out a student-centered model of learning. Soon you will see a um mastery-based grading model proposal that we hope to implement with your approval. And then um it will allow students to move at their own pace three days a week, so really making them responsible for their learning, allowing those students who are ready to move forward to move forward at their own pace. And then for those students who need additional time mastery skills, they will be able to have that. So this is kind of the summary of the exciting things that are happening at Locust Trace. We'll be rolling out some um branded products. So look for uh Locust Trace branded beef, branded lamb, branded fish, pork, chicken, sausage jams and jellies that we hope to um market. And then we're proud to announce too that we have a new, new dual credit opportunities. Five of those from BCTC, additional um from EKU, Moore Murray State Racer Academy and Moorhead Courses. And then BCTC also has additional through their NARA program and their equine program dual enrollment opportunities as well for students who want to pursue that. So I'll close with this fact, one in every twelve jobs in Fayette County directly relate to agriculture. As we look to the future, we must take a new innovative approach. Your continued support enables the Locust Trace team and our partners at STEM, STEAM and The Promise Academy, along with others across the district, to do exactly that. Because of the support you have given, our students are able to learn in an environment where the world truly is their classroom. Thank you for the occasion to share the excellent student opportunities happening at Locust Trace and I will now turn everything over to Ms. Stevens, who's got some exciting news about STEAM Academy.
Alright, the elevator jacks because I've gotten notification, we may need a movement break real quick. So if we can all just pause for a moment and if you need to use the restroom, grab a drink, whatever, do it and we'll come back here in the next couple of minutes.
And while we're breaking Mr. Mont, I will say that the board expects a full um sampling of some of those uh Locust Trace uh products.
Absolutely. And when everything gets up and running again, just know that um the castle hasn't extended an invitation that they would, you know, open their doors for one of your all's planning meetings or just a luncheon or anything like that for you all to see what our students are doing there and then what all is in store for the new um newly, like they've got a lot of developments going on at the castle. So absolutely.
Very good.
August fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at the O. Johnson Elementary. And our students wanted to make uh this building our home. And so uh we integrate sci- uh the arts into all of our content. We do not teach a standalone art. And so this is just one of the examples that's on our floor when you walk into the front of our building from one of our students in our first graduating class. She hand painted this on the floor uh for us in January. We do a beautification of the building. Every year, we teach our students to own our building and express their artwork. And so this is just one example of a student expressing her artwork uh at STEAM Academy. So uh we, we love uh Johnson Elementary School that we're in now and we look forward to bigger and better things. Okay, next slide, please, Ms. Johns. Uh, we are very proud of uh our notables and we, we highlight these in the building with our students at um Alcon. Uh, just a little bit about who we are. Uh, our staffing, we have one director, which is me. We have two admin deans, uh two counselors. We have a, an attendance clerk, a community liaison that's really our, our boot soldier out there to spread the good news about STEAM. Full-time bookkeeper, we have a point seven front office clerk and three custodians. And we have a, a school social worker uh that we shared this year with the ML King and the Learning Center uh that we truly enjoy having. And then we can offer band and uh orchestra and percussion uh through the support of, of the district. But if you look at our STEAM notables, if you look at Fall two thousand and nineteen, um we are super excited of our dual credit opportunities for our students. Uh, keep in mind that we entered uh the BCTC campus in uh Fall of two thousand and eighteen. But before that, we did have uh some opportunities for our students to learn from BCTC instructors on our STEAM campus. Um. So if you see, in the Fall of two thousand and nineteen, uh we had thirty-seven students with uh the arms, our straight A's. Uh, we had thirty-one students that were with an AB on a row and our overall GPA is three-point-four-one. And again, uh these are students who met the criteria for BCTC and are doing some amazing things while they're there. So we definitely celebrate the victories in the classroom. Uh, if you look over to the opposite side where it says internships, you will notice that uh we had seventy-nine students that were involved in internships uh on that campus and uh then fourteen students that went to tech schools and that was for the Fall of two thousand and nineteen. And then the spring, you can see an increase in the number of students that were involved in internships and number of students that were involved in the tech schools. And again, these internship opportunities are on the BCTC campus, they're on the University of Kentucky campus and in those surrounding areas. And then some of the internships are in some of our local middle schools and elementary schools. Uh, the internships, uh and one of the reasons you see the increase is because when the students go in the fall, they will come back uh throughout the school year and they will talk to the other students who have not had the opportunity to go for internships and, and to be on the BCTC campus. And they will really encourage them. You really want to see what colleges lies like and experience college. You really need to get on that BCTC Cooper Campus. And so they work diligently with each other to make sure uh that they do that. So you see the increase from fall to spring. And then notice the number of, of hours that our students have for internships. In the Fall was seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five and we was on our way to increase that, probably double it uh this spring semester before COVID nineteen and all of that happened. But uh we definitely had an increase in our students uh with internships and some amazing internship, real-world, experienced college and career-ready internships. So our students are not allowed to uh intern at a Sonic unless they want to see how a small business runs and they can work at that end of the aspect of it. But most of them are, were at that time, were at the hospital. Uh, they were in the nursing program in UK. Uh, we had a few of them that were at the radio station, actually received their DJ certification. Uh, we have some with KET that went from Uh, we have some with K E T that went from internships to co-op opportunities and so it really worked for our students. Uh, one of the things we're really excited and we we run a close ri- race with with uh Carter G is our attendance. Our students love coming to school, we run about about ninety-five percent uh attendance rate. Uh, they enjoy being there, we will have parents that will tell us. That their students will wait at the bus stop ten fifteen minutes early so they don't miss the bus to get to STEAM Academy. We have students that will ride Lex Tran to get to school uh and will um. Wake up and be on the bus stop at five o'clock in the morning, we had one young man uh two years ago, perfect attendance and it his was public transportation. Uh, so they truly enjoy coming to school and we have an attendance clerk like no other. Uh, if our students miss more than three days of school, she is on the phone. Uh, she calls the parent to make sure everything is okay, uh she calls the student, she provides support. Uh, if there is is illness in the family, she's quick to send a card on behalf of the school. Uh, she will visit our students if they're at the hospital, uh our our parents and our students know that we have. A very caring and loving environment and we just take care of our students. So uh we're proud of of the work that our students do, we celebrate their victories in the classroom, we have town hall meetings. And we always talk about their success and we help them to realize that we could not do it without them being present at school. Okay, next slide please. So just some of the structural looks at STEAM Academy, uh we were one of the first that was one-to-one Chromebooks and want to thank uh Fayette County Public Schools and. And Bob Moore and his department for coming to us and asking, uh would you like to to pilot this? Now, at first we will bring your own device, so we had everything from iPods to cell phones to MacBooks to tablets. And and the equity equity was not there for our students. So when we started the initiative for the Chromebooks, uh for some students, it wasn't growing pain because some of them had the very state-of-the-art uh equipment. And we wanted to le- level the playing field, once we did that, uh we saw gaps just almost disappear. Uh, students knew that we were all on the same expectations for learning. Uh, teachers were able to troubleshoot uh technology problems because we all had the same type of device. Teachers start modeling by using Chromebooks in their classrooms as well and so at STEAM Academy. Uh, our our instructional uh component is uh technology. We our uh textbooks are used as a resource, but our teachers mainly rely on Chromebooks uh to support our students' learning. Uh, we are one of the first in the state to truly integrate Canvas. Uh, we actually started Canvas before uh the district had offered to pay for the program, we used the free version. And we started because at the encouragement at the University of Kentucky College of Education. Uh, at that time, uh the university was talking about moving from Blackboard uh to Canvas. And so we wanted to be a part of that program as well with the university. Um, I would tell you, there's no going back with Canvas, uh our students enjoy it, our staff, parents enjoy it. It's very easy for them to log on, look up, see what they need to do. Uh, when our teachers are absent, our teachers do not have to li- uh leave an extensive lesson plan. Uh, they can just, you know, tell the the students, the substitute teacher to go into Canvas. And and students know what to do, they will sit there and they will get their work done. If a student is absent, very seldom will they come back and say, what did I miss? Because everything is already uploaded on Canvas. We have had students at home uh that have doctor's orders not to come to school and they will sit at home and they will still do their work on Canvas. And they will communicate with their teachers and their friends through Canvas. So Canvas has been a win-win uh for STEAM Academy. Uh, we tell our students and our parents that um uh STEAM Academy is the world, as Mr. Mon said. A student can be anywhere and log on to Canvas and still get their work done, they do not have to be. At one, two, three, E Sixth Street or nor they have to be on the Cooper Campus for B C T C. Uh, so we we enjoy that. Um, we are a semest- a semester-based uh program in that our students have to um. Be eighty-three percent or higher in their core classes in order to move on. And so we do this because we want to have high expectations for our students and we want them to know that they can do it, uh it's possible. Uh, we we support them in their learning, uh we provide E S S after school, our teachers have morning. Uh, office hours like like you would see a professor on a college campus, so our teachers have morning office hours. Uh, they will Google and Zoom with students in the afternoon. And so students are are able uh to to get on and be successful. Uh, we really do personalized scheduling for all of our students, um they are not put in I C and a schedule pops up. Basically, uh it depends on how they're performing academically. If some student's pace is such that they can accelerate their learning, we accelerate and we'll fix the schedule for that student. If another student needs to slow down, uh we call it taking a second bite at the apple, then we'll give that student that opportunity to take that second bite at the apple. Uh, and then uh so we hand schedule all of our students in the fall and then based on their academic performance. We go back and we hand schedule again in the spring. And uh and so students are able to uh talk about the things that they are interested in and what they would uh like to pursue. Uh, I'm I'm sure you are aware that we are an open lottery, so students don't necessarily have to be interested in the S T E A M. Uh, they uh just want a different way of learning. And so it uh uh we are blessed to not be able to handpick our students. Uh, we we do not look at attendance, we do not look at behavior, uh it's all done at Central Office through the Gifted Office through the Prior. And what we get is what we get and and we would not have it any other way. Uh, we have watched as our students blossom from their freshman year to their senior year, that is just absolutely amazing. And we capture those those testimonies, we've had students that have walked out of our building that have said STEAM has saved my life. Um, and and when we hear that, we we know that we're making a difference uh with them. Uh, the beauty in two thousand and eighteen, uh the district allowed us a a challenge and we accepted. Uh, that we could split our campus and our juniors and seniors could actually take classes on the Cooper Campus. Um, a little bit nervous, but we did and what a decision. Uh, our students realized that um they were going to take classes with everyday citizens of Lexington, everyday citizens of Kentucky. So uh the classes on the Cooper Campus are just not B C T C students, they are students who are enrolling class at B C T C. Uh, our students have come back to us and said, you know, uh we I'm prepared. I didn't realize how prepared I was for college, going to STEAM for two years, but I can do this at B C T C. And and we'll talk a little bit about why we think we have set them up for success, a little bit about our demographics. Uh, three hundred and forty-nine students, again, we have of of some students that are on our B C T C campus. You can see our our um our data, we had forty-seven percent female, fifty-three percent male. Our previous lunch is about forty-nine percent and the the other, the unique learners that we have on our campus. And then the diversity uh of our student population, so we really mimic the demographics of the district. Uh, we love that and we love that we have students from all six high schools. Uh, we have students that have been homeschooled, we have students that have been private school, students have never been a part of Fayette County. And to watch them at our recognition program in their own cap and gowns and the friendships they have made across the district. Is just absolutely amazing, so uh we love the demographics, we love reflecting the district and and what we have to offer for our students. Hey, next slide please. Uh, excellent student opportunities, um eh we we just provide so many opportunities for our students. And uh we will tell our students and our staff that uh we don't say no, it it takes a lot for the admin team to say no at STEAM Academy. Uh, but what we do ask is if a student comes up with a project, an idea, we will say, sure, write a proposal, send it to us. And and we do that, and sometimes I'm thinking they they're not going to write their proposal and they write their proposal every time. And they present it to our advisory council. But a lot of our experience is is hands-on experience and we received our training from the University of Kentucky Next Gen Leadership Program. And also uh from certified project-based learning trainers from uh Jefferson County. And also from uh Carmen Coleman, so they were the first folks that really taught us how to work with students on project-based learning. How to assess it, how to teach students how to own their education. And uh we hang our head a lot on P V L uh to the point that we thought that we were. Requiring a little bit too much of of P V L and then our students came back to us and said, you know, we really miss doing school-wide P V Ls. We enjoy doing the ones in classroom, but we really want to do some school-wide P V Ls, so we had to pull back. Uh, because that's what our students have asked, requested, and so we did some more school-wide project-based learning that our students truly owned. Uh, we have our our dual credit uh opportunities for our students, our biggest partners right now is uh B C T C. And the University of Kentucky and you can see the number of courses that our students have taken over the years and their overall GPA. And when I say students and diverse population, you you name it and we have students enrolled at B C T C and UK. And are doing amazingly well, uh from our gifted and talented to regular ed to five oh four to our special needs population. We have a a a resource teacher that works with our students on that campus, our students have learned how to advocate for themselves. Uh, while they're there with their college professors, um one of our highlights was we had a young lady that uh. Would that had a special needs and received a full scholarship from a private institution and it was all on her. Uh, if we had, if you had saw this young lady her freshman year, uh and where she was a senior year, eh there was just no comparison. She is an amazing young lady and so extremely proud of our students, the the opportunity to do internships. We teach our students how to uh go out and find their internships. They have to uh send an email to someone explaining why they would like to intern with them. Uh, they must do a cold call to set up an opportunity to interview. Uh, they have to go on an interview to make sure that this internship is a good fit for that student and for the other person as well. And and then they have to log their hours and there's a uh some course series in Canvas that they have to record about their internship experience. Uh, our students have, again, went from being interns to co-ops to uh one young man. It was when you finish with school, please come back and look us up, we we guarantee you a job. Uh, and so uh uh folks will see our students doing their internship program and not realize that they're juniors and seniors in high school. They just do a fantastic job, we have a very active student voice team, kind of like the Pritchett Committee and that's where we borrowed it from. Um, and so every um uh every committee that we have, we have students on our committees. So we have a a stack advisory, STEAM accounts, STEAM Academy Advisory Council. We have one upperclassman that represents the juniors and seniors and then we have another student that represents the freshmen and sophomores. And they bring ideas and solutions to our stack council. We have a girls and boys group that meets with our counselors during lunch, uh peer mediation, we have a very active National Honor Society. Uh, and they do a lot of community service, has opened the eyes for those students uh with Ronald McDonald House. Uh, they cook for the Hope Center, uh they have now some of the students in our National Honor Society. Are are being tutors for some of our freshmen and sophomores during the N T I days, some of our students are struggling. So uh NHS students have volunteered to tutor them uh through Google Meet to have to support them. Uh, we have a very good student technology leadership program, a girl STEM club, uh and and the young ladies actually went to one of my teachers. And said, we'd like to have a girl STEM club, would you support us? And absolutely, and from there there a grant was written and um they have been very active in. Just exposing young ladies to STEAM STEM opportunities. Um, uh six habits are the the make and break for us and so these habits are what people will call soft skills. And um are essential skills and these habits are taught to our students and they are fifteen percent of their grade. And so uh just real quickly, I'll run down the habits, we have uh effective communicator, uh active and responsible decision-maker. Creative and critical thinker, uh intentional collaborator, altruistic leader and engaged learner. So we teach our students these skills in their class and so when a teacher is teaching a lesson, they will say, this is the habit that we're going to work on today. Today you're going to be an intentional collaborator and this is what it's going to look like. And so our students are graded on those, well, we we've had those habits and so now we want to massage them a little bit. To make them reflect the grad profile that the superintendent, the school board is uh asking folks to work on. So we have changed some of the wording on our six habits. And and so we still have the critical, the creative and critical thinker, uh persistent learner. Active responsible decision-maker and inter- um intentional collaborator. The ones we changed was the altruistic and culturally competent leader, where we want our kids to learn how to give back to the community. Uh, and so that's the one that we want to make sure that our students learn that uh, you know, i- it's okay to 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 receive. But it's also great to give and what does that look like in in your community and in your society? So we're working with our six habits to integrate that with our grad profile. And we're working with the University of Kentucky Next Gen Leadership Program to put that all together. We were on a roll and then COVID nineteen happened and so we've kind of slowed down a little bit, but we uh our goal is to have. Our um grad profile up and running for next year. And uh before our seniors graduate, they will have to defend their graduate profile, okay? And then of course we have K Y A which is Kentucky Youth Assembly and uh KUNA which is Kentucky United Nations Association. And that teaches them about government and and all of that, all of our field trips are hands-on engaging. Uh, we want our students to again be a voice in the field trips that we schedule, okay, next slide please. Some of our community partners and I'm sure we have many, many, many more, Altech has always been a great supporter of of STEAM Academy. Uh, they've worked with our science teachers, they've come in and they've uh uh completed some experiments with our students. And so uh we have a presentation of learning nights in May, um and we do that every year in May where all of our students present their habits. As something that they've learned, Altech will come in and uh judge some of our presentations. Uh, Batel has been great with our science department, uh they have donated money toward our science department to buy equipment for our teachers. And also we'll be coaching and working with our teachers in the near future. Uh, B C T C, uh again, working with us, they provide so much support for our students on on the campus, uh on Cooper Campus. Every Friday, they are meeting with our students about classes, uh tuitions, scholarship, grant opportunities. Um, and work with uh Mr. Reed, our counselor, and Mr. Flores, who was the admin dean there. Lex Mark has been a great supporter of STEAM Academy, provided some scholarship opportunities for some of our first gen students. Uh, textbook purchases for some of our students and also with technology. The Lewis Stock Alliance for Minority Participation, this is actually, L SAMP is a program for graduate students uh all na- nationally. Um, and so there is a program at the University of Kentucky and one of our parents that was on our advisory council also works with L SAMP. And he asked if we'd be interested in starting a a L SAMP chapter at STEAM Academy. And uh we said, of course, eh I do believe we're the only high school that has an L SAMP uh alliance with the group. And the goal is to expose students, uh minority students and females to opportunities in the sciences. Uh, uh mainly graduate school, PhD type of work. And so uh our students for the last two years have attended the L SAMP co- conference. Last year, it was at Marshall University and we received a grant from uh Bluegrass uh Foundation. Where we took a busload of students to that opportunity and watched the the grad students present. This past year is at Kentucky State University and we took our group of students to the L SAMP conference there as well. Uh, UK Next Gen Learners uh Scholars Program, very supportive of STEAM. Uh, and will often work with us on our Tuesday meetings after school with professional development in the area of project-based learning. Uh, working with us with mastery grading and working with us on um allowing our students to be an advocate for their education. How do we teach our students to own their education? Uh, the UK Leadership Academy is a program that we uh belong to and we have the opportunity to send an administrator. And uh three teachers and they work with the university on some cutting-edge um project-based learning. Cutting-edge learning opportunities for students, how to engage students in those opportunities. And uh and then at the end, they come up with a project, we come up with a project that we want to present. So there's a cohort of about nine schools that are in that Leadership Academy and so you, everyone brings ideas and thoughts to the table. Um, so this year with the Leadership Academy is where we start the bulk of our work on our grad profile. And we're so close to being finished with that and when we have the opportunity, we would love to present our grad profile to the school board. And then the last one are just different opportunities that we have for our students to do some research, uh, with professors at the University of Kentucky. Um, s- uh, students have, have some experiences that, uh, they, that they enjoy and appreciate. Have opportunities for scholarships, uh, but if you ask them the one thing that they really enjoy, they would tell you it's the networking. Ms. Stevenson, I've met professors that I, I've never thought I could work with or do this type of work before. I am a part, I'm part of, uh, a presentation. Uh, my name is listed on publications. And, and so, uh, and again, some of these students are just our average students, but we provide excellent learning opportunities for them. Um, so, uh, the last one, please, on the horizon. We just cannot wait to get into fifteen fifty-five. I'll tell you now, we are so excited about Georgetown Street. Uh, every time we see the building, I, I ride past it because I live in Georgetown. So I either ride past and take a picture and I tweet it out. But we are so excited that the district, oh my goodness, the district allowed us to be a part of the planning process. Uh, uh, our students, our parents, uh, our staff. And, uh, and so, um, you know, for some folks it may not be, but to have a, a real science lab, a real science lab, uh, that our students can, can use, a maker's space. Uh, they, uh, the architects had one floor plan. We came in and said, we want more of an open floor plan. We, we like space. We don't like doors. And so, uh, they listened to us. Uh, once we get to fifteen fifty-five, uh, we are, we, uh, 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 we love a community school. We want us to be open to the community as well as sustain and success. So, uh, our vision is to have after-school programming. We, we've already talked with Park and Recreation. We talked with Marin as well to do an exercise program. Uh, we would like to do one for employees of IKSS. Uh, because our school day is over early, so let's open up our building to the district, to the employees of the district. And then an after-school exercise program for the community. Uh, we look forward to being the PBL hub for the district to host conferences, uh, for project-based learning. Not just for Fayette County, but for anyone that was interested in project-based learning. Uh, we look forward to all that, the empty acres of land to have a school, community garden. Uh, we want to work with the folks in the Oakwood neighborhood, uh, because you know, some of them are just old farmers that have great ideas. And so we want to do a community garden with them. Uh, and there's an after-school intramural program. As you know, we do not have sports at STEAM Academy, but our students long for that activity. So we, we thought about an intramural program. And we already are having conversations with the University of Kentucky,泌seology and Health Promotions Program. Uh, our PE teacher, our wellness teacher is a CrossFit instructor as well. And so, uh, we see CrossFit, uh, in our future. And actually right now, we have a CrossFit class for girls. And our young ladies love it and the transformation is absolutely amazing. So, uh, closing, thank you so much, District. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for allowing Board and Superintendent and everyone at Central Office IKSS. Thank you for believing in STEAM Academy. Thank you for believing in our leadership. Thank you for allowing us to try, make mistakes, uh, fail, get up and try again. Uh, you, uh, will be even more proud of us when we move to our new location. But what we've done now at one, two, three, East Sixth Street has been short of amazing. But you know, it couldn't have happened without the support of everyone, uh, at this, at the board. So thank you so much for all that you do for us.
Alright, thank you, partner.
Thank you.
Okay, switching gears here and now jumping into Girls' STEM. Uh, Soraya Matthews, I think you all know me. I work and serve the district as our Director for Teaching and Learning. Uh, but also for our Office of Special Magnet and Innovative Programs with, uh, myself and V, uh, who Tina was also talking about earlier. Uh, I'm here to share with you some of the great things that are going forth with Girls' STEM, uh, which kind of was housed and birthed from our Special Magnet and Innovative Programs. But also I want to make sure that I make note to, to say, uh, a huge thank you to the board and, and to Manny for his vision for the program. I can't, I can't even count how many families and parents have just said to me how excited they are about this opportunity. And they're just so elated that this is now something that we are offering to our girls and our community. So, uh, just kudos to our board and to, to Manny for that vision and that foresight. Um, I do also want to point out that we are now officially the Phoenixes. Uh, our young girls, uh, had an opportunity to vote on the school mascot and our school colors a couple of weeks ago. We did that via, um, a Google form. So we just sent out the link and they were able to vote. And, uh, we had, uh, about hundred, hundred families to participate. And so we are officially the Phoenixes. Looking at our leadership team, so as you probably are already aware, this has been very much a collaborative effort, uh, from the onset. Uh, the superintendent asked us to kind of put out what we call an RFI. And we were asking, um, you know, our potential partners to share their vision and how they can partner with us and con- in developing the school and creating this opportunity for our students. And we had several to kind of come to the table and say they wanted to be a part of it. Uh, but the primary partner at the table is UK. And what we did with that opportunity, if you go to the next slide, um, we took that opportunity to info all of the other partners who wanted to be a part of this opportunity. So we've developed what we call the C two C collaborate to create, uh, community. And it does, it, it incorporates the UK partners, our families from UK, but all of these partners as well. And a few more because we, we continuously get emails, both myself and V, uh, just asking from people how they can be a part of the work that's happening with Girls' STEM. So we are really proud to say that this has truly been a partnership effort, uh, in, in, you know, getting the school up and running. Next slide. And then, so new on board, we have our new, uh, School Director, Jennifer Jacobs. And she's coming from Chicago. Uh, her family will be, uh, moving to Lexington very shortly. But we had an opportunity to have a meet and greet last Thursday with our families. We offered two times, uh, one in a day, um, but then one in the afternoon, just trying to make sure we were being convenient and mindful of our parent's schedule. We had over a hundred parents and families and young Phoenixes, uh, to join us on those calls. And they were very, very excited, had a lot of questions, uh, but they were just excited to get a chance to see Ms. Jacobs, uh, and to hear from her and hear about her, her wish and her hope for the dream and her dreams for the school. So, uh, we are very excited to, to have Ms. Jacobs on board as well. Next slide. Looking at, this is something that we have from day one. Uh, and our plan and our process is we knew we wanted to go out and really focus on, uh, getting more students of color, girls of color in the program. Uh, and I think our efforts really paid off. We had well over three hundred applicant, applications, uh, to go into our lottery. Uh, and it was a one hundred percent lottery, full lottery, uh, like many of our special programs are. And we have all one hundred and fifty seats filled and you can see here what the demographics of those seats look like. Uh, but then I also want to note that we have almost a hundred people on the waiting list. So while we have a hundred and fifty seats filled, if anything was, were to happen and someone changed, had a change of mind, we have well over a hundred who are ready to kind of step in. So I think that does speak to not only the demand of our special programs, but families who want to be a part of this great opportunity. Next slide. And looking at our structural, uh, kind of how the school, uh, lands in our district. Uh, of course, we start with our superintendent, working with families as our partners. And then his Chief of Staff, me and Sharonda Morton. And then kind of the house, uh, that will oversee and support the Girls' STEM from our district level is the Chief of School. So we've worked directly with one Chief of School and then our Office of Magnet Innovative Programs, that's myself and V, will kind of help and support the school and embrace the school in any way possible. And continuing to create and, you know, get more girls every year, we'll help them with their marketing. We'll help them with, um, anything that's needed to, to just support the school. But then there will also be a great partnership and collaborative partnership with the C two C that collaborate to create, uh, serving as an advisory to the, to the Girls' STEM and to the director there, the teachers, and supporting our teachers and staff, uh, whenever possible and however possible. Next slide. In addition to the structure of the school, so we kind of looked at previously where the school lands within the district. Uh, within the school itself, this is kind of what the, this is what our staff structure looks like, at least for year one. This is our year one staffing model. Uh, we are beginning the year with two kindergarten teachers, two second grade teachers. And I'm sorry, two first grade teachers. So, uh, that's looking at a twenty-five to one student to teacher ratio. We're also going to offer four specials and all four of those are point five positions. But that will give our students an opportunity to get some additional special, uh, rotations within their, their class, their typical class day. Uh, the administration side, of course, we have our Director, Ms. Jacobs, who I shared earlier. But in addition to that, we're adding an admin dean, one counselor and one STEM coach. And then on the students, the school support side, we'll have a, two pair of educators and their kindergarten, going into the kindergarten classrooms. Uh, one admin assistant and one custodian. So that's kind of our first year, year one, uh, staffing model for the school. Next slide. So looking at just what our top priorities are, financial priorities in year one. Uh, number one, of course, is the school environment. Ri- right now, we are going to be housed at the Spur Row location, previously Lingley, Lingley Elementary. So of course there was some renovation that's needed. We have to also purchase furniture and technology. Uh, so those are priori- priorities. Uh, but then in addition to that, just our staffing. And we are, uh, right now, we only have one more teacher position to fill, uh, and I think, uh, the custodian position. But right now, we're right on track to have all of our positions filled, uh, for the upcoming school year. And of course, professional learning, uh, as we can imagine, and, and going into what Tina was talking about and learning how to do more project-based learning and then that inquiry learning. We recognize that our teachers and even our school leaders are going to require some very strategic professional learning and knowing how to do that and implement that well. Uh, and then last but not least, we're also, financial priorities are our curriculum resources that are needed. Uh, specifically consumables, when you're thinking about the maker's faces in our STEM lab and you know, all these different pieces and parts that girls have to be able to put together to build and explore. Uh, so those are kind of our top four, uh, financial priorities for the year. And just ending that, on that note and saying, we are STEM. We're very excited. Any questions?
Thanks, partner.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everyone. And last and not, uh, but not least, the FCPS Promise Academies. Our Promise Academy schools are Harrison Elementary and William Wells Brown. Next slide, please. An issue in FY, this causes an issue of equity. Our kids in Fayette County deserve the equitable access and opportunities. Extending learning time is about equity, giving our kids access and opportunity to what they need to be successful. And one of the things that we have determined that will help them in this area is it, is, is intentional focus on the word gap. Them acquiring and accumulating, uh, appropriate vocabulary, as well as looking at our brigade scores from where they began. Our students in these areas come to school not prepared, not because they aren't capable. They just hadn't had the e- the access, they hadn't had the opportunities. And so as part of our Promise Academies, this is one of our major focuses. Next slide, please, Amy. The report on poverty ends with this admonition. The amount of time a- allocated for learning, high po- high poverty schools is not the same as time available for learning. And that what it calls for is community stressors li- that lead to much higher levels of lost instructional time. Because of the community stressors, we have found and our superintendent has focused on that and has sta- stated that the community, while the schools are doing a good job, but so much happens outside the community prior to their even getting to our buildings. And so our work has to focus on that. Our work has to, uh, uh, to address those concerns, but also build upon what they bring and make it a better, a better en- environment for our children, in which our children can learn. This is our FCPS Framework for Change. Family, it focuses on family and community engagement, content and student-focused learning, a supportive environment, strategic planning, leadership, early warning systems, targeted professional learning and core process alignment. These are, this is our framework for change, but is also very much an important part of our Promise Academies. Next slide, please. The Promise Academies exist to create personalized, world-class educational experiences that prepare all students to reach their potential and to change the world. As you know, next slide also, next, we have some schools, uh, this is probably CI, CSI supports that you provide. We also have one of our schools, which is William Wells Brown, which is probably still, um, labeled as a, or has the title of CSI. So some of the supports that you all have provided as a, as a board included the audit, the Cambridge Turnaround Plan Development and Management, tier three district support teams, directed professional learning, school improvement grant funding, district-pointed leadership and mentorship coach, school-based instructional specialist, additionings, additional staff allocations for permanent subs, pair of educators and certified staff that target student and program needs, mental health professionals, FR friskies, social workers and accelerated learning re- labs or and summer bridge. For our Promise Academies, additional, next slide, Amy, I'm sorry. A district, additional district support for Promise Academies includes, again, the school turnaround leadership support from Cambridge, additional point five school-based instructional specialists, extended school day, extended calendar, full-time frisky, full-time mental health specialist, full-time social worker. These are in addition to. Also the pair educator, uh, uh, allotment of two permanent substitute, two, uh, permanent substitutes, world language teachers and also additional certified staff. Last slide, please. And because of the board, only because of you, only those who can see the invisible can achieve the impossible. Our Promise Academies are growing. This is year one. We are very proud of the work they have done. We, because we didn't get to finish our assessments at the end, our formulas ass- assessments have shown along the way that we are turning the corner. Again, this is year one and year three, having been at Ashland, I realize it's a three-year process and we appreciate your support of our schools. And we know that we will achieve the goals that we have set, that we have established for our schools and that, that our stu- our students will be successful. Thank you.
Alright, I see Board Member Love is able to join us, uh, certainly keeping you and our thoughts and prayers, big guy. Um, to, to, uh, wrap up, see if there's any questions before we adjourn. Um, and I don't know if John wanted to, uh, say anything as well. But is, is there any questions up in the board based on what you heard? You didn't see all of the, um, excellent student opportunities, as, as you know, there's more, but we wanted to pick, um, didn't cherry pick, but pick those that actually, um, are doing or, or looking at shifting and doing some things different for this upcoming school year. We may have to make it, we made some additional investments. So with the partnership, um, uh, at Locust Trace that we're doing, um, investing with teachers there for middle school, expose more students, uh, to the equine science. And you know, as I've often, often stated, you can't choose what you don't know. And so by exposing more students to it, then they got a choice about careers and opportunities. With, um, STEAM, obviously fifteen fifty-five Georgetown. And, uh, Myra, can I, can I share? Cause I'm still in disbelief, big guy. But, um, it's set, we should be able to open. Alright, I'll share. And you know, I can't, I can't hold stuff back. We should be able to open, if we open school the second week of August, we should be able to move them in and open at, um, fifteen fifty-five Georgetown. So, yeah, Tina, yes. Right? Be able to move you in at the beginning of the year, partner. So how's that for ribbon cutting? Maybe, you know, virtual ribbon cutting, but would do something. No, it, you, you'd be able to move in. Um, you and, and Janice and our baby STEAM and Success Academy. The school should be ready. I know. It's like, you got the cap, like I was in the Oscar, or, or something. You can tell them, partner. We should be ready to go.
Secret, I tell you. You all can hold a secret.
We're getting better. We're getting better. But, um, some secrets are better told. Being able to share that. Go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, it, cause I think, you know, going back to this particular-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, because I think, you know, going back to this particular program, when we first rolled it out, this was one of our first uh, programs, talking about trying to be innovative and coming out the gate. And we had promised that they would have a school. And I mean, and it is taking, this has been a long journey. I mean, it really has. And, uh, I really want to say to Principal Stevens, just thanks for your patience as you had to work with families. Um, as we had to kind of make the adjustments back and forth, you have been, you know, quite the trooper. And I think you've helped a lot of family, helped a lot of families. You know, kind of hold on as we've kind of gone through this. So, um, I know that you, when I saw that, I mean,
Thank you all so much. Oh, I'm so blessed. You have made my year. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, partner. I mean, uh, you know, I, I, I certainly, um, echo what Daryl said. You know, I still remember coming here, even be in my entry plan in, in the, um, pre-entry phase, hearing about steam and what Daryl talked about, the location and 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 everything and, uh, trying to get to a permanent location uh, that families would support, that school could get behind, that community could get behind. And so, you know, um, well, yeah, you, I, it's just, yeah, I took some lumps those early. You know, I was out there, partner, and you, and you, and you at that meeting. Okay, took my share alone, but it was all worth it. And we'll do it again for our students, uh, for the teachers, for the staff and certainly for you, partner. And so I'm, I'm excited. So wouldn't share that. And then obviously the Girl STEM, which we're all excited about as well. And, uh, being able to launch that. And I didn't even know, I mean, all the clubs you had, I know you had a Girl STEM club. But I can see some support and and and, uh, partnership there. And then lastly, with the Promise Academies, and you look at the work we've done with Cambridge, with our school leaders and teachers. The district had seven C S I schools and a year later, you only have one. Right? From all the work and the additional investment and resources. And as we look ahead, um, with the Promise Academies and talking to our teachers and staff, gonna make some adjustments at Harrison. Dismissal is gonna be at three thirty, but five days a week uh, for next year. And, um, at William Wells Brown, dismissal is gonna stay the same. And to get that work done. So with that being said, Stephanie, I turn them back. Oh, Daryl.
Hey, man, and and board members, I apologize that I was not able to be a part of the entire discussion today. Um, very important content, I'm sure. Um, I would ask, man, if you don't mind, can I just get a copy of the presentations that were shared today? And, uh, just in case I have some questions after I go through the process of reviewing those.
Yes, sir.
Hey, man, I just, I just want to, you know, we, this is a budget conversation. These are great programs. They're on the cutting edge of all the college and career readiness stuff we we talk about. It's it's really focusing on the jobs and careers of the future. Uh, there's also a unique opportunity in this changing climate that we're in to, as we reinvest and invest more dollars, is to go to our partners to invest more dollars too. We need to consider that. Uh, I was sharing with the group on the chat, the U K is above their record pace last year of grants. Um, and they're anticipating some really unique things going on in ag science especially, but agriculture with ag science especially. Um, and there's other reinvestments as we look at retention and recruiting. Uh, there's going to be a free-for-all of talent out there. And everybody's going to want to continue to go with our message of let's go early. We're trying to get people to invest in our schools to go early with talent. We need to continue to have that messaging and Stephanie needs to activate our foundation to be the third party, the conduit, to continue to attract dollars to make these programs even stronger. So as budgets get tight, we need to consider that and un- understand that. We need to continue to attract those dollars that are out there in partnership.
That's absolutely correct, uh, Ray. And that's why, okay, um, I love that you jumped in, so now you got a time for me.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say anything.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was putting my hand next to my face. I shouldn't be touching my face, I know, but.
You are, big guy. Um, but that's why, uh, Ray, you know, we applied for, um, the national school, the national, um, uh, School Venture Fund grant. And, uh, we're, we applied for that grant for our Girls' STEM and, uh, we're continuing the process. Uh, that should bring six figures in uh, to support that program if we're successful. National, uh, yeah, the National School Venture Fund. And so, and the same for Carter G. Woodson Academy, which we already, um, we're working through that process and, uh, to the C. So we have, um, our oars in, 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 in the waters and those grant opportunities and will continue to do so. Um, and we have a great grant office. So I'm gonna tell Billy and his team, I know he presented, um, on Monday, but, uh, you know, we got some folks who are helping us push out these grants. The AmeriCorps grants, hopefully that comes through for us as well. Uh, which provides additional, um, additional supports into our, our middle schools. Um, and so, you know, all of that and all of the grants that we go after, um, support our equity agenda. So I turn them back over to you, Stephanie, to adjournment.
I just wanted to jump in real quick. The AmeriCorps grant just got the, uh, the text. It did come through.
Yes. All right. Oh, and that's how you speak things into being. That's a lesson learned. That's how you speak things into being. There you go, Ray. How's that? We just got that. How much is that AmeriCorps grant? Let Ray know how much, the dollars behind that grant. Uh, how much is that?
Um, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars is what we're receiving from, for the AmeriCorps grant.
All right.
Per year.
Per year. Okay. All right. So I gotta let you close this out, partner.
So, yes, so just a funny comical story, because I like to be real with you all. Um, during this whole meeting, I have had a possessed mouse running back and forth across my floor, knowing I couldn't do anything about it because I was with you all. And if you saw me jump once, it's because it ran under my chair. And my dog has also been chasing it. And so this has been going on almost two hours now. Um, so if you saw me do weird things, just want you to know, or if you saw my eyes kind of staring down, it like knew I couldn't catch it. And I laughed because this is the first time none of my kids have been in the house in like eight or nine weeks. So I think it was just so quiet. This mouse is like creeped out. Um, but I.
Now, hold up, partner. You got Jerry, you gotta get Tom. You gotta get Tom over there, not a dog. You gotta get a Tom. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna get a cat. We're gonna get some mousetraps here in a few minutes too, because, um, yeah, this thing's gonna be mine here shortly. Um, but I wanted to just say something too. Before I got into this meeting today, I was having a conversation with moms and one of the mom boards and they were really concerned about their children falling behind during this whole process. And, you know, and I really kind of said, well, you know, the great thing about this is children are resilient. And children, um, the chi- children are gonna catch up. And we also have to recognize that every child in America is on the same page right now. And so when we're thinking about school going forward, well, first of all, you know, I brought up that we, we know the data from kids in national disasters and the history. And we know that these kids may miss three, four, or five weeks of school because their school was hit by a hurricane. And these kids still catch up and they still graduate at the same rate as their peers. They still go, circulate to the same post-secondary age, you know? But in this case, every kid is like that. But what it really means for us as educators and administrators and and staff is that school is going to look different over the next few years. It's not just the twenty twenty-one school year. It's gonna be the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We're gonna be feeling the effects of this period for a long time. And so I want to really reiterate to parents and to the community that we all are going to have to think differently. But as we sit here as a board and we really think about budget, you know, we need to think about the implications down the line as we're, you know, we're having to think about education differently. And some of us in education have said that some things need to change and that it was gonna take like a national disaster to make that change. And, you know, I think we may see some big shifts um, through this period. So I just kind of want to reiterate that thought as we are going through adjournment here or as we're preparing to adjourn and going through the budget process. Um, and if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Morris and a second by Mr. Daniels. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Is Tyler still on here? Motion passes four zero. Um, because Mr. Murphy had to leave to go to another meeting. So thank you all and have a great day.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, team.